All right, we're ready to roll. Thank you very much. Today is July 13th, 2021. Today is our regular meeting for the Lake County Board of Supervisors. We're going ahead and start with a moment of silence. Was there any moment of silence? Go ahead, Supervisor Crandall.
Yes, I would like to dedicate a moment of silence to Gene Polino, a beloved elder of Winter Springs and Upper Lake. He was a World War II veteran, renowned writer. He was in the Navy. He wrote a lot of books. He was a columnist. He raised his family in Southern California and then moved up here later in his life and then fell in love with his second love. And they built a small farm in Upper Lake and enjoyed life together for many years. And one of the things that I got to know Gene on is he was my worth chair in Upper Lake. And he was very active, very organized, and he was an ardent, he always wanted to protect Upper Lake. And so we'll always remember Gene for his fire energy and his spark. And I'm pretty sure we have a video to add to this. And so if you're ready, Jake, go ahead.
All right, I'll start that video up. One second here.
Watching things from the beginning when they're proposed to the time when you finally get some action is like watching grass grow. But to see it finally happen, as we have in a couple of things we've done, is the best feeling in the world. I have to fall back on something I've said before to other people, and I try to practice myself. The only thing that will be remembered for when we leave the small blue planet spaces when we're gone is what we've done for other people. And the knowledge that doing something for other people, especially older folks like myself, gives me a good feeling.
Thank you for that, Supervisor Crandall. That's kind of heart-wrenching. I do want to do another moment of silence as well. This is fire season, and I know that just recently with the fires that are even impacting us due to the electrical wires over in Southern Oregon, that there have been two firefighter deaths. And I just want to remind everybody, please be as fire safe as you can be. These fires are dangerous not only to our communities and ourselves, but are very dangerous to our first responders. And so let's remember our first responders as well today. And usually I try to go in rotation, and I forget where I was last for the pledge allegiance. But Supervisor Crandall, please, if you could lead us in the pledge allegiance today.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving forward, are there any extra items from staff or board supervisors to add to this meeting?
None that I have today, Mr. Chair.
Oh, I was almost ignoring Zoom. Thank you for bringing me back to your attention. Okay, so nothing on number four. Let's go ahead and go to item number five. I believe that item 5.9 will be pulled. Are there any other items that need to be pulled from the consent agenda from board of supervisors?
Mr. Chair, there were two very minor corrections to 5.2 and 5.3, so we would like to pull them for a very quick discussion and make those corrections.
Thank you for reminding me of that. So 5.2, 5.3, and 5.9, again.
And then we're also pulling 5.12. That will return hopefully next week.
Okay.
And when you get to the regular agenda, I believe there may be, I believe the behavioral health director may want to pull a regular agenda item as well.
Okay, and we'll go ahead and get to that in a moment. Let's go ahead and finish the consent agenda. Let's open it up to the public, both in the Zoom room and the board chambers. Any items that anyone wishes to pull for further discussion from the consent agenda? If you are in the Zoom room, please dial *9 if you're calling via telephone, or click on the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. And seeing none, let's go ahead and bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I will move, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda, pulling number items, or let's go approving item 5.1, 5.4 through 5.9. Wait, I mean, I'm sorry, 5.7, and then 5 point, now I got them all mixed up here. Apologize. 5 through 5 point, yeah, let me start over.
And actually, if I can interrupt you before you start, I forgot I did want to pull item 5.8 for a quick discussion. So you actually read my mind without me saying anything.
So, all right, 5.1, 5.4 through 5.7, 5.1, 0 through 5.11, and then 5.13 through 5.16. I think I got them.
I think so. So we have a motion by Supervisor Simon, a second by Supervisor Scott. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Yes.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we're going to take up those items a little bit later. We do have somebody here in the public that wishes to make a public comment. So let's go ahead and move on to 6.1. And we have John Drury, who went and submitted a citizen input request form. So you have three minutes. Welcome.
Hi, my name's John Drury. I've been a county employee for over 16 years. I'm a Lakeport resident. Wanted to touch bases about the fiscal recovery funds that the county just got. I was doing, I've participated in county negotiations for many years as DSA president. One of the things that gets talked about often in negotiations related to county revenues is one-time money and how it can't be used a lot of times for compensation to its employees because it's one-time money, we can't count on it all the time. Specific to the fiscal recovery funds that the county just got, in the interim final rule that the U.S. Treasury had put out, it specifies, starting on page 45, about premium pay related to the essential workers that the county has. And I think it's a really great opportunity. We have kind of a newer board here and not necessarily doing things the way that things have always been done. And we have some one-time money that's come in that presents a great opportunity to be able to give back to your county employees, something that I've heard a lot of the board members refer to as the county's greatest asset that it has. So with that 12-point-something million dollars that the county has received, I hope that you guys would take into consideration the premium pay related to its essential workers, and that's for all of the county essential workers. That's all I have.
Thank you very much for your comment. Any further public comment? Again, if you're in the Zoom room, please raise your hand by clicking the raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen, or *9 if you're calling via telephone. Okay, looks like we're done with our public comment. And again, we're going to get to those consent agenda items a little bit later. We have our 9:06 a.m. item, so I'd like to get to that right away. Let's go ahead and move on with our 6.2, consideration of update on COVID-19 epidemiology.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. Denise Palmero, Health Services Director. I'd just like to introduce Sarah. She is our epidemiologist, and she's going to be giving you an update on our COVID-19 data today. Thank you.
Good morning, Supervisors. I'm going to provide a brief Epi update of the rapidly evolving situation. I think I was here about a month ago, and a few things have changed, so I'm going to try to highlight those items for you here today. So we're just going to start with the indicators that I typically report. These are from the state website, covid19.ca.gov. And what we see on the left, the dark, the black line represents Lake County, and the lighter gray line represents the state and its testing. So we're looking at tests per 100,000. On the left, you can see here the decline in testing in Lake County since the surge in the winter. And then we've had some peaks and some recent increases in testing. At the same time, since really sort of mid-June, we've, we had a low of less than 1% testing positivity. That's increased over the last three weeks to a high, the most recent, of 6.3%, which is the highest you can see we've had since the surge this winter. And here you can see the state also at a low, about 1% for a couple of weeks, and they're also beginning to see an increase in testing positivity. Here is the Epi curve. As a reminder, this is looking at the number of new cases identified by episode date, which is either the day someone first experiences symptoms or their test date. And you can see, we've, we had a couple of weeks here in late spring, in May, in June, fewer than 20 cases identified per week, with a low of nine the week of June 13th. And in the last three weeks, we've seen an increase in new cases. Most recently, as of yesterday, have identified 36 cases for the week beginning on July 4th. So we're going to dive a little bit deeper into this recent increase and the recent cases before we move on to give you an update on vaccines. So here, just wanted to show the daily case rate in comparison to the state. So again, Lake County is the black line here, and the most recent daily case rate, the seven-day average, is 10.3 cases per 100,000. The state is closer, is between 3 and 4 per 100,000 right now. So went from a low in mid-June from about 1 up to about 10 cases per 100,000. This currently is the highest daily case rate in the state, again, for this period here, June 27th to July 3rd. I wanted to just show this, this table to highlight a few things. So for the most recent period, daily case rate, 10.4 per 100,000. That's 47 cases identified among Lake County residents with a testing positivity of about 6.2%. You can see that many of these other counties are in the Northern California region with some of the highest case rates in the state. And what I wanted to note on that is statewide, the state had a daily case rate of about 2 per 100,000 in mid-June, and that's nearly doubled in the last three weeks to about 4 per 100,000. And it's the Bay Area, Southern California, and the greater Sacramento region that's really doubled in the last three weeks. I want to be clear that these rates are still relatively low, so when I say doubled, doubled from 2 or 3 to 4 or 6 per 100,000. But I think it's just really important to note that we are starting to see increases regionally and statewide and draw attention to the increase in Lake County. Here, I'm showing you a look at some of your neighboring counties. So here it shows California in the blue line, like I mentioned before, a low about 2, starting to creep up to about 4 per 100,000. Orange here is Lake County, showing your low of about 1 per 100,000, and the increase over the last couple of weeks to over 10 per 100,000. And we continue to see cases identified every day, so I, you know, I don't think, we aren't, we aren't coming down yet. So we need to watch this really closely, and I'm going to speak to a couple of things I think that the county can focus on to address this increase. You can see Mendocino in green had their low sort of earlier in the spring and then increased prior to Lake County. And they started to see corresponding increases, COVID hospitalized patients in their county. And recently, Lake County has seen that as well, and I'll show a slide for Lake County. And I just mentioned that as, you know, that's a really, really helpful indicator, looking at hospitalizations due to, you know, if people aren't getting tested, the daily case rate is obviously can be an underestimate, but hospitalizations can be a really good metric of what's happening in terms of transmission in the community. Oh, and here we go. So here I'm showing Lake County's data from last spring. So here we are in the present day. So on July 11th, there were four COVID hospitalized patients in Lake County. You can see the surge here, the decrease, and a few blips through the spring. And this, to be clear, does not include any Lake County residents who may be hospitalized outside of the county. So continue to watch this and also watch the regional impact on hospitals.
Do you mind if I ask a quick question while you're on this slide? You said it doesn't count for those that are out of county. Do you have that full number of how many Lake County residents are hospitalized overall, not just hospitalized here in Lake County?
Yeah, the short answer, and I'll ask the team to jump in if I misreport this, the short answer is no, or sometimes. So the team does track that with the case investigation. However, when people get transferred out of county, we don't always know that, depends on resources available to track that, communication doesn't always happen back. So, you know, in the beginning of the pandemic, I knew we were tracking this really well. And then when the surge happened, there were other priorities. And the state data, how this system works is that hospitals report directly to the state, and it's not by county of residence. It's who's in a hospital bed in that county. So I don't believe we have that information collected in a systematic way, though I'll ask someone to jump in and let you know if I misreported that.
Yeah, the data is mainly, the data is mainly collected for hospital capacity, not necessarily for understanding how many are hospitalized from individual counties. So I get why that information is difficult to access.
So it's, again, like not a perfect indicator of transmission in Lake County because we don't know who's going out of county. I remember during the surge, we did look specifically when we were really concerned about healthcare capacity. I looked at who, when we were really collecting that data, before we ran, you know, before there were other priorities. We were transferring at sort of the height of the surge, I believe about half of patients out of county. I think it was like about 20, 25% in Sonoma, about the same in Mendocino, and then mostly in the Bay Area region. So that's why I was looking at Mendocino, they've seen a slight increase, Sonoma seen a slight increase. There's still plenty of capacity. We're not obviously at surge levels, but it's just something good to watch. So lastly, before I talk about sort of the recent cases and the increase, wanted to share that we have 63 confirmed COVID deaths in Lake County. This has changed since we reported it about a month ago. It's standard best practice with any communicable disease to do a review of cases and deaths. And that's what's happened over the last couple of weeks. Many counties have undertaken that quality control effort as we've gotten through the surge and as we've gotten through the big vaccine push. And there's lots of reasons why it can be challenging to identify COVID deaths or any death due to communicable disease in real time, like we just talked about with hospitalizations out of county. Won't necessarily know if a resident who's transferred out of county and dies in a hospital, that death certificate is filed in that county. There's a process, there's a lab timed for that before it gets reported, and then we can identify it in the electronic death record system. And so the process that the health department has gone through is standard practice. It ensures that we don't have any duplicates, ensures that it is in fact a COVID death. And again, many other counties have embarked on this process really when there's, as there's been more capacity. So just a few slides, wanting to talk sort of real time right now because of the increase from about 1 per 100,000 to 10 per 100,000 over the last three weeks. So who are the recent cases? Like throughout the pandemic, the majority of the cases are young, 20 to 44 years of age, disproportionately so. So about 55% of these cases were 20 to 44, but only make up about 26% of the population. We've discussed this before, working age out about in the community. What I'll show later and really want to stress is that three out of five people roughly in this age group, 18 to 49, are completely unvaccinated. So I think focusing on vaccinations among young people is really critical as we move into the summer, as the Delta variant increases across the state and very likely in Lake County, it's more transmissible. And so I think it's really, really critical for, for all groups, but particularly this age group that's been disproportionately impacted throughout the pandemic, to be protected by the vaccine. Roughly, cases in the last month have matched the racial/ethnic composition of the county. So about 2/3 of the cases were white, non-Hispanic, almost 3 in 10 were Latino, and 6% were Native American, 4% were Native American, non-Hispanic. And then by geography, where do cases, where do these recent cases live? About 1 in 4 live in Clear Lake, 1 in 5 live in Lakeport, and 1 in 6 live in Kelseyville. Of course, this doesn't mean that the people became infected in these places, lots of different places, potential places of exposure, but this is where, this is where cases, recent cases have lived. And then our data on mode of transmission, we are missing data on about 50 cases of these recent cases on likely mode of transmission. So they are limited, but I just wanted, the data we do have, what we see is presumed community transmission and household contact remain the leading ways people are becoming sick. Community contact, occupational exposure, so in your workplace, and then congregate living settings, six cases have been recently identified. So I'm going to pivot now to talking about the vaccination coverage. So 50% of people 12 and older, so of the eligible population, are fully vaccinated in Lake County. That's nearly 28,000 people. These are people who are, you know, better protected from becoming infected as well as the Delta variant. 61% of Californians, in contrast, are fully vaccinated, but I wanted to give you a bigger picture. There's a lot here, but essentially I'm showing you all 50 counties and the state. And so let's look on the left. So in Lassen County, 30% of the population is fully vaccinated, up to over 80% of the population in Marin County is fully vaccinated. In Lakes here, about in the middle, just shy of the middle of the pack here, at 50% of folks 12 and older are fully vaccinated. And here's the state at 61%. And then this should look familiar. Looking by geography, we see 55% of the eligible population, or 55% of this 23,000, is still unvaccinated in these zip, these six zip codes over here, 95422, 95423, and these four others. And then among the 31,000 eligible population living in these six zip codes, 44% remain unvaccinated. And I will just close by stressing this again. Great progress, 50% of eligible population is fully protected, but this 59%, 3 in 5 people, 18 to 49, are not vaccinated. And I think this is a really critical moment. The Delta variant is the predominant strain nationwide. It's increasing in California. It's been identified in Lake County and the region. It is more transmissible. We know that the vaccine, particularly being fully vaccinated, will protect people against the variant. So I think there's great, you know, focusing where most cases are coming from this age group, so really focusing on vaccination. And of course, just want to reiterate, as we have throughout, that people of older age, higher risk for severe complications and deaths. So any work to be done to target people over the age of 65 who still haven't been vaccinated, I think, is a really critical intervention at this moment. So I'll close, and I think hand it back to Denise, and happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. Anything from Director Palmero before we start asking questions from the board?
No, I just wanted to give an update. We have been working with the schools to get the school-aged population vaccinated. We've gone through the majority of the schools already. Our next two vaccination clinics are Monday, July 19th, 10 to 3, at Lower Lake High School in the new gym. And then on Wednesday, 7:21, 4 to 7, at Kelseyville High School in the Student Resource Center. We will be providing Pfizer second doses as well as first doses as needed, and Johnson &amp; Johnson. So you don't have to be a student to come to these clinics. They're for the community that we're trying to boost the vaccination rates in. And then we will be looking at opening up clinics here at the Health Department throughout the week. We also still have the OptinServe in Lower Lake. They're doing testing on Monday and Thursday, and they're providing vaccines Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. So just want to give your board that update.
Thank you so much. Any questions from the board, comments? Supervisor Pisca?
Sarah, I have a question. Was, just to be clear, was Lake County the highest with positivity rate in the state?
The daily case rate for June 27th to July 3rd is the highest in the state. I would have to look, I'll look back. I don't know if the testing positivity was the highest, but it was definitely towards the top. But the daily case rate has been, for a couple of days, has been the highest, and I think we'll continue to see that at least for a couple of days.
Thank you for that clarification. Oh, I got one.
Any further questions?
Oh, one more question. So just, do we have any idea how many transfers the hospitals are making? I know you don't have that data, but just, are they providing any of that information?
They're not providing it directly to the Health Department. They report directly to the state, and then there's a lab time where we get the data later. So as Sarah indicated, it's a state reporting system, and we don't get that information directly.
Okay, thank you.
So I have not heard anything about the hospitals. Are they looking at potential surge preparedness at this moment in time? Are they not discussing that? I know that was a large part of what occurred between November and January, and there was a lot of concern about the capacity. Is that something that is being discussed with the Public Health Department as well as, I believe the EOC is still occurring? I know that I'm no longer taking part in that.
We have not had any recent contact with the hospitals. They do reach out to us if they feel like they're starting to get, where they need to have surge capacity assistance. And we have not had that conversation recently, but I'm happy to check in with them and see how they're doing. We do talk to them about once a week at least, so, but they have not mentioned any concerns for surge at this time.
Okay. And then the, I forget what the N was for your data between the dates that you were looking at. What percentage of those that are testing positive? What percentage of those that are testing positive have been vaccinated?
I don't have that data in front of me, so I can't speak. So the N for June 10th through July 9th was about 100, I think it was 139 cases. The number of people testing positive who have been fully vaccinated is extremely, extremely, extremely low. I didn't look for this period specifically at the state level. They, a couple of weeks ago, reported that the daily case rate in unvaccinated individuals was about four to five per 100,000, and the daily case rate in fully vaccinated individuals was about 0.5 per 100,000, so significantly lower. And then even among those cases who vaccinated cases, again, a very, very small percent of people asymptomatic, mildly symptomatic, no severe disease or outcomes.
And I think that in the next time that we have another presentation, I think that information is really useful to share with the public, just because I think that our conversation still revolves around vaccination versus not vaccination and the impacts and the effects to that. And I know that somebody has brought up and most likely will bring up the concerns of the vaccine, if there's numbers that we can bring next time, so that we have public health information on those numbers to provide the safety of the vaccinations. Everyone is physiologically different and reacts slightly differently, and some will have small effects and some may have large effects. But if we have actual numbers versus just rhetoric, that would be very useful to bring to the board.
Right. I'm happy to bring that, and I just got a note from the team that of the hundreds of cases we've had since the rollout of the vaccine, we've maybe had about five cases among vaccinated individuals, again, out of the hundreds. But I appreciate the sentiment that we can bring hard numbers next.
Right, right. And as you said, the acuteness of the symptoms are typically much lower. That doesn't mean that they're always going to be, but I think that that's what I'm reading coming from CDC and coming from CDPH as well, and that's California Department of Public Health. Any other questions? Supervisor Simon?
Just to follow up on some of the contracts, I know we contracted with some outside agencies just for messaging, and I think Chair Sabate hit it on the head. You know, the more information and education we can get out there to the folks on the vaccines, the effectiveness, and then getting that information so people can make those decisions. We do know that their own personal decision, but we do know education is a big part of that. And I just would, I guess this would be for Denise, just following up, I know, I think we had two different agencies that we hired for contracting, both with the Native American community, the Hispanic community, to really get this messaging out there. And just wondering where those contracts are, or if we could get an update on that on our, at our next meeting.
I'm happy to do that, Supervisor Simon. We have actually three contracts currently. We're working with the County Office of Ed, Healthy Start for the Hispanic population. We're working with another agency for the Native American population, and then we've been working with Hope Rising, who's also been helping get out a broader, more blanketed type messaging. So we will bring back data at the next update for you on how many people that they have served and what they've been doing.
Thank you for that. Any further comments or questions?
And I want to do add to the context of messaging with hospitals. I think that part of the issue that we've had in the past is the fear that our hospitals don't have the capacity to take care of the patient load. And so if we can get the hospitals involved, because it would help them in the long run as well to be a part of that messaging, that way we're not all working in silos individually, we can, we can have a well-rounded, robust messaging going out to the public.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you very much. If there's no further comments or questions from the board, let's go ahead and open it up to the public. We have hands up already in the Zoom room, so we'll start there. Let's start with phone 4627. If we can please unmute. And you have three minutes. And if you can please state your first and last name. If you are on the phone, I believe star six is the way to unmute.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, thank you. This is, good morning, this is Tom Slate, and thank you so much for the report, but as a layperson, I have a kind of a two-part question that would be really helpful. And I keep hearing the term cases over, you know, over and over and over. What is a case? How is a case determined? And along with that, I noticed in the grand jury report, it said in the jail, they were using something called a PCR test. So is there, you know, the county doing in the jail too? But the really, the fundamental question is, how is, what is the process to determine that somebody or something is a case?
Thank you for the question.
Denise, I can take that if you'd like. Yes, we use-
Sure. Either that or Carolyn Holiday, our Director of Nursing, is on to you. So go ahead, Sarah. I defer.
Just briefly, Carolyn, you can jump in. Yes, we use, but case means that it's a PCR lab confirmed COVID infection among a Lake County resident.
Okay, you know what, it was kind of fuzzy. You know, I apologize, but it was a little fuzzy on the phone. Could you repeat that a little slower? I didn't quite get it.
Happy to. So a case, the case, the case definition is that there has been a PCR lab confirmed test result that a person has COVID and they live in Lake County. So it is lab confirmed. So if someone has a rapid test, for example, they will need, and that is positive, they will need to get a lab confirm, a confirmatory test to, for us to count them as a case. That is the case definition at the local, state, and national level.
Okay, so am I, do I understand, if they have a rapid test though, they would still need to confirm it with the PCR test? Is that-
Correct.
Okay, yeah, that answers, that's very helpful. So thank you very much, and keep up the good work. Thanks a lot.
Thank you for your, thank you for your questions. Let's move on to Fairlight. If you can please give us your first and last name.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, thank you. This is Fairlight Algren, and I really don't think three minutes is enough. I really had to cut this down. You're going to have to hear from me again. I'm sorry. This isn't going to be enough, but-
You're taking up some, some very valuable time, so please get started.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to get to my statement so I can read it for you. Okay, thank you. I'm ready. 10 years ago, I took full responsibility, personal responsibility for my own health and for my family's health when I studied holistic health through Institute for Integrative Nutrition. I was exposed to hundreds of alternative healing modalities and encouraged to try them on and see how my body responded to each. In doing this, I learned how to work with my body and listen to what it needs. Since that time, I'm happy to report, I have not been sick, except once, in December 2019, which I'm pretty confident now in hindsight was likely one of the first early quote-unquote cases. I remember being very surprised to even having been sick at all, since my immune system's normally quite robust. However, I was going through some hard times, my immune system was vulnerable, I was sick for maybe a week, after which I did an Ayurvedic detox and bounced back with incredible strength, stronger than before. I'm convinced that the lifelong immunity I now have in my cellular memory is far superior to any man-made injection that is strain-specific and which manually overrides the natural immunity my intelligent body provides by working in harmony with its host of microbes and organisms. I speak to you today to demand my sovereign right to decide what is right for my body and my child. I will never consent to forced digital IDs, which I believe are the end goal of the release of this engineered biological weapon, which I never, I'm sorry, and I will never consent to forced vaccines or medical interventions, whether experimental or FDA-approved and mandated. I take personal responsibility for my health, my loved ones. Please stop parroting the false logic that herd immunity requires naturally recovered persons to override their dynamic immunity. Please stop saying we need everyone to protect the vulnerable by getting the shot. There are solutions we can reach to protect the vulnerable without putting the healthy at risk. For example, my grandfather had emphysema in his last years, needed to be on oxygen. His immune system was compromised. We knew that because of this, we had to be careful not to allow sick people into his presence. We didn't demand that the others outside our family change their behavior, shutter their businesses, or get a quote-unquote vaccine. With freedom comes responsibility. I take mine for myself and for my loved ones, and I invite us all to do this.
Your heart.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. And we will move on to the next one, which is Julia Bono.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, if you can speak a little bit louder, please.
Um, can you turn my microphone up?
Perfect.
Well, I'll just, I'll just speak louder.
Perfect.
A baby yelling, this is working for others, you might try. I do not have a webcam. Anyway, my name is Reverend Julia Bono, and I would like to speak about the ethics of vaccination. Has the board considered that some Lake County residents might have an ethical and/or religious objection to the fact that animals, including fully sentient primates like ourselves who value their lives, were used without their consent and subsequently all killed in order to briefly test each of the currently available COVID vaccines? No long-term tests were done, and many hundreds of innocent lives were indecently kept in cages and prematurely terminated. Politicians and other decision-makers like yourselves must also recognize how much time, money, and innocent lives are wasted in the current animal testing paradigm. Research shows that over 90% of new drugs fail in human trials, even though they've already been proved safe and effective in experiments on animals. Furthermore, over 90% of highly promising basic scientific discoveries, most of which involve animal experimentation, fail to enter routine clinical use within 20 years. Between 50% and 89% of preclinical research is not reproducible with animal experimentation implicated as a significant factor. Not only is such animal testing cruel and murderous, in my opinion, which some people who care about animals naturally consider unethical, but the differences among species are so vast that results in animals are at best a very poor approximation of what will happen in humans, or at worst dangerously misleading. Those who ethically boycott the harmful use of animals are known as vegans. As a happy side effect of their ethical stance, their healthier plant-based diet also largely immunizes them against respiratory diseases like COVID, from which a recent scientific study published in the BMJ Journal of Nutrition Prevention and Health showed that vegans have a 73% lower chance of suffering moderate to severe consequences from. Furthermore, as an example of the serious health issues that can arise in humans from the COVID vaccines that were not highlighted in animal testing, my sister-in-law suffered a life-threatening blood clot in her heart just days after taking the Moderna vaccine that she is still recovering from months later. Furthermore, another close friend of mine was stricken by Bell's palsy and had half of his face paralyzed shortly after being vaccinated against COVID. The CDC's own VAERS database found 438,441 cases in which adverse events associated with the COVID-19 vaccines occurred as of early July, including over 9,000 deaths and over 7,000 permanent disabilities. I therefore maintain that not only is animal testing unacceptably cruel and harmful toward animals from a strict ethical standpoint, but the currently available vaccine products need years more testing in paid and fully informed human volunteers, not just six months or less, before they are deemed suitable and safe for mass distribution, distribution among humans in this county and elsewhere. With all that noted, I do however support incumbent voluntary social distancing protocols, including homeschooling, to slow and spread, slow the spread of a typically rather mildly symptomatic disease like COVID and avoid overwhelming the healthcare system. Thank you, I'm done.
Thank you very much for your comments. Moving on to, I think we heard from phone 6205 already? Am I incorrect on that? Let's just go ahead and go, since that's the next one on my list. Phone 6205, if you've already spoken, if you can please be succinct on your second turn, or else you have three minutes.
Hello, can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
Thank you so much. I haven't spoken yet. This is Bart Levinson, and I'd like to bring everyone's attention to, and Sarah, please, to an article in the Press Democrat Saturday, July 10th, where they reported that there were five new deaths in Sonoma, and that one of those, one out of the five, had been fully vaccinated, and that one out of the five was under 50 years old, and all were men. So I just wanted to ask Sarah to please bring, as you asked for Mr. Sabatier, more specifics when she comes next to the board. I think that they are really important for us to know.
Thank you for your comments. Next-
Thank you.
Next is Will Tuttle. And you have three minutes.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so I wanted to respond to a few things. Sarah had said about there's fewer cases when people are vaccinated, and I think it's very important to point out that the CDC is being very deceptive in their policy, because when people are unvaccinated, the way it's always been, the amplification rate that they use in the PCR test has been set at around between 35 and 40 amplifications, which creates a huge number of false positives. So you say, oh, this person has a case, they're sick, even though they're fine, they don't feel anything wrong with them, but it's a case. And when someone is vaccinated, the CDC now has changed the amplification rate to only 25 amplifications. So instead of 35 or 40, it's only 25. So now miraculously, all these vaccinated people, they never have a case because they changed the amplification rate to a low level, which guarantees that they won't show up as a case. So there's deliberate deception going on here with that, and I think it's very important to understand that. The other thing is, I was glad to hear one of the other people commenting and pointing out the fact that these are very dangerous. I already have 9,000 people dead. Europe is 17,500 are dead, 1.5 million people with injuries, and in Europe, and about, as she said, 440,000 roughly with injuries, about half lose of serious injuries. And according to many experts in this field, that there is, this is just the tip of the iceberg, it's going to be increasing as time goes on. Robert Malone has said that he's the inventor of the mRNA vaccine, and many others, that these are going to be sterilizing people and killing a lot more people. So there's quite a lot of understanding growing that this is a genocidal effort that's happening. And I want, I have a question just in closing to, since I live in South Lake County, to Supervisor Simon. I just want to know if you, you know, there's been, it's well-known, there's been a lot of genocide by the government against American Indians over the, over the decades. And if we have a genocide unfolding right now against human beings, and if you become aware of this through your interactions with people that you know and love, that get sick, that get sterile, that, you know, are sterilized or they can't function anymore, they die, would you be willing to make a motion at the Board of Supervisors meeting to stop this rollout of vaccines? Would you be willing to make a motion and, and say we shouldn't have any education to promote these when they're so harmful? And the, and this is just the tip of the iceberg of the harm that's coming. What would it, I guess that's my question. When you, you know, when you really, if you really understood this, would you be willing to make such a motion to- to make such a motion to save the people of Lake County and to talk to other supervisors to do such a thing? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, Mr. Tuttle, you know, I've heard you chime into these meetings, you know, week after week. And, you know, first you said you're a doctor, and I don't know if you practice medicine, and then we clarified that issue, that I don't think you're treating folks at this point. So to hear you use the word genocide so lightly is definitely offensive to myself, and I think the rest of the Native population in this community. And every week, you just, you just never amazes me what comes out of your mouth. Moving forward with this and seeing the harm that this has done to our tribal members here in Lake County, our tribal, you know, the reality of it. I've had family members that at the beginning of this, you know, did not think that getting a vaccine was good. Now, we've had folks that have been affected in my community. We've had young folks have been affected, we've had folks that were, less than a year ago, completely healthy, and now on oxygen, unable to move, in hospitals. It's unbelievable what is happening. So as I moved through this pandemic, which I was never expected to deal with when I was elected, I absolutely looked to the science. At this point, from my point of view, we are doing the right thing. It is an individual choice, but we do know that the effects of the vaccine are more positive than negative. And if it came to light that there was something that was drastically known and scientifically backed up, not just personal or political feelings on this, would definitely do everything I could do to do the right thing. And I think at this point, we are moving in that direction, educating folks, giving them the opportunity to make their own personal decisions is what we need to do. It's not how we believe, it's what we see around us. And I've seen people affected by this, and I would hate for anybody to have to lose somebody. From day one, that's what I've taken it on. Life is more important than having a personal feeling. And if it ever got to that point, I would. But each week that you chime in here, I hope at some point, when you ask us to look at your information, which we all do, we receive it, we read through it, we try and educate ourselves, I wish that you would do the same on your side. Look at and understand how this is affecting people's lives, how they're losing individuals, and understand the other side of the argument. Everybody has their own personal decision, and I don't think you've ever heard me say I'm going to mandate anything for anybody. What I'm going to do is try and protect my community, my family members, and keep doing that every day. I am not a doctor, I have never said that setting here. What I know is the information we're being given, I think, is the right information. I'll continue to educate myself and try and push the message that I feel will hopefully save lives and save communities. We've all been through it, recently lost a member of my family, and there's no greater pain, no matter what we do, political aspirations, money, nothing is more important than family. And trying to protect your family is something that I always try and do, and my community. So, Mr. Tuttle, you can ask me whatever questions you want, but I would appreciate it if you yourself would not use the word genocide in such an easy way, because it did happen, it happened here to the Native community, part of that. Bloody Island is one of the most devastating things in Lake County that's ever happened, and that's just one of the small stories of the devastation of this country and its people, the indigenous people that were here before. So I don't know what to tell you, but I'm trying to do the right thing, and I'll continue doing that. Your words frustrate me, that's all that I can say at this point.
Thank you, Supervisor. And I share that frustration with you as well. Amanda Brock, you have three minutes.
Hi, good morning, everyone, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you so much for holding this meeting today and opening us to the public. Thanks for hearing us all. Thank you for continuing to protect our choices and give us options for our freedom of health and medical sovereignty. I do want to agree with everything that Fairlight and Bart and the others have said before me. I want to bring it to the attention that the PCR tests are widely known to present 97% false positives when run over a 35-cycle threshold. So I would like to ask the question whether or not the board is willing to make motions to change the way the PCR tests are implemented in revealing cases, and whether or not they're aware of whether a vaccinated or unvaccinated person is treated with a certain threshold cycle. That being said, I want to speak further to, as someone who considers myself half Native American, my father is a physician, my mother is a labor and delivery nurse, and I have been immersed in the medical field for my entire 30 years. I have been studying Ayurvedic nutrition for the last four years. I've studied nutrition, environmental ecology, and I've been a lifelong organic farmer. And in my personal experience, the only time I'd ever taken a flu shot, I got sick. Other than that, I have, like Fairlight, have never been sick. And except for, I had a very similar story in the winter of 2019, actually in January. I had a week of illness, and I detoxed with apple cider vinegar and garlic and cayenne, and I got better. And I, like her, feel balanced back, stronger than ever. And I've had my opportunity, plenty of opportunity, to do a lot of research. And in speaking to what we see around us in terms of tragedy, it seems like maybe 63 people have died in Lake County, but as Will said, 1.5 million people are already dead in Europe from a shot, an experimental shot that's neither FDA-approved nor approved or accepted by the majority of the people around, nor are there clinical tests to show us the effects, other than the ferrets and apparently chimpanzees who have 100% death rate. So I'd like to know what the VAERS data is for people in Lake County who have been vaccinated, maybe for the next meeting. And I would like to know what research the board is doing to understand the effects of vaccines in terms of its history and causing autism. If that's my thought, I'll stop there.
Yep, that's your three minutes. Supervisor Simon wanted to make a comment.
Yeah, I guess, I just want to make it very clear. I have been vaccinated, to get the Moderna vaccine, I got both my shots, I am fully vaccinated. So if you want to talk about research, you have not taken the vaccine, which you can do over the next four years, which I am sitting here on this podium. I got the vaccine, so I will let you know. That's the experiment, that's the education I'm doing. I took the vaccine. I encouraged folks to take the vaccine that were in my family, they can make their own decision, but I did it as a leader. So the education I'm having is, I got the Moderna vaccine. You know, I know you guys who are anti-vaccine or say, do not take it. What you will be able to do is watch the effects on me. You know, that's where it's at. I am vaccinated, I have taken it. I understood the risks when I took the vaccine, but I also understood the risk of getting COVID, especially being a tribal individual with the history, you know, of diabetes in my family, other things, and it outweighed the risk. So I took it. So if you're asking me what, what I'm doing to educate myself, I took it. I'm understanding what's happening, and you can watch those effects right here, every Tuesday for the next four years.
Thank you, Supervisor. I see no further comment on the Zoom room. Anyone wish to make a public comment on this agenda item in the board chambers? Okay, so let's go ahead and bring it back. I, I think that there's unfortunately some large misunderstandings, and I'm just going to say it, listening to the wrong political cues or the wrong scientific cues, nobody's forcing anybody to do anything. We are seeing changes in the positive way due to the vaccine. If you don't want to take it, no one is going to force you. No one is chip IDing you. I still can't believe that's still a thing, when you're carrying around a telephone that has the chip already in your hand that you put in your pocket every single day. Nobody needs to do that, you're already being tracked. You made that decision on your own by going to a cellular phone shop and signing up. It is saddening for me when, yes, some people who have the vaccine will still get sick because it's 95%. It's not 100%, it's 95%, and that's only for specific vaccines. It goes a little bit lower with different vaccines. I think the Moderna was 95, Pfizer was 92, or something along those lines. But the fact that we are only seeing unvaccinated people, and it's a choice, and you're arguing that the vaccination is what's killing you, and I don't think you understand what 1.5 million people looks like, but you, we're not seeing stories of huge cemeteries propping up in the middle of Europe to bury these people, like we saw in India, like we saw in Houston, like we saw where there were refrigerator trucks because they could not hold on to the amount of dead bodies that they had. We can only deal with the natural occurrence of what happens with birth and death. When there's intense deaths, it is difficult to handle, because we're not prepared for those things. It's, it's, it's hard to have a conversation where nothing that is being said is believed, but yet someone out there has your ear and you believe them. The FBI and the CIA can't even coordinate, but yet this worldwide event is coordinated. Makes no sense to me at all. It is not a mandate, you are not being forced. I know I've had conversations with some of the people that have spoken today, they will share with me information from the CDC, which I read up, but when I share information from the CDC, nope, that's not the kind of information they want to follow. The CDC claims we had a 27% increase in death rates, and it's a term that I don't remember the specific term, but of death rates compared to 2019 and 2020. What do you think that's due to? We have to figure out how to become safer. You could be as holistic as you want, but maternal death rates are down because of science, infant death rates are down because of science. Yes, it's good to be healthy, please be healthy, but recognize that we are living the way we are living today because of science. And sometimes, yes, having a cellular phone to your face may not be the healthiest thing for you to deal with, having a microwave in your house might not be the healthiest thing to deal with, but look at 1930 compared to 2020, and what we deal with as a, as a population and how long we live, that is not a natural occurrence, that is science. It's okay to question stuff, you should question stuff, but to state that there's 1.5 million deaths in Europe is just incorrect. It's not true. The VAERS, I never learned about until this vaccine came out. Why? Because they give it to you and they say, please tell us if anything happens. That's you and me, that's not your doctor, that's not a science person who has studied medicine, who goes on VAERS to claim that something happened to you. That is up to us as individuals to make our claims. There's a difference between causation and correlation, and I think that is where we dropped the ball on critical thinking, that just because I did A and B happened to me, that it's only because I did A. That does not always happen, and that is not always the case. It has to be studied further than just the simple data that they throw in front of us. Again, it's good to ask questions, and I hope that we can bring more information, but to make statements that are absolutely not factual is so much worse than, than, than what you believe. It's very frustrating. Any further comments before we close this item? Sorry for being on my soapbox for a second there. We are going to move on. Thank you so much, Director Pomeroy, thank you, Sarah, again for the information, and I believe we will have you on next week's agenda so we can get some of that data. Let us know if you need more time to be able to gather it, but I think you should have access to that information.
Yeah, we'll bring it back, for sure. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Let's move on to item 6.3, Presentation of Proclamation Recognizing Melissa Fulton For Her Years of Service to Lake County. And Supervisor Scott, would you like to read that proclamation?
Sure.
I do not have it with me.
It's in front of you.
Oh. I'm hiding it.
Can you sign it?
I did yesterday, I believe. Yes, I did.
All right. So if Melissa wants to join me up here, I'm glad you could make it in person today with us. And you have quite a group here, and I know that the Zoom room is absolutely full of people, and if we could change your mind and make you stay, I think we all would be trying to do that. So here's a proclamation, Board of Supervisors County of Lake State of California, recognizing the retirement of Melissa Fulton and honoring her many years of outstanding services to Lake County. Whereas Melissa Fulton has passionately served alongside citizens, Melissa Paviltes and businesses owners since October 1990 to create and promote a healthy climate for businesses and commerce throughout Lake County. Whereas Executive Director and Chief Executive Officer of the Chamber of Commerce, Melissa Fulton's dedicated over 27 years to promote and advocate for the best interest of our business community. Whereas Melissa Fulton has represented the interests of commerce within Lake County throughout leadership over the participation on numerous boards and committees, including but not limited to, Lake County Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors, Lake County Rodeo Association Board of Directors, Rotary of Cleve of Lakeport, Lakeport Main Street Association Board of Directors, Lakeport Economic Development Advisory Committee. Whereas Melissa Fulton's leadership excellence and overall spirit contribute significantly to successful events and promotions intended to attract tourism and businesses. Her hands-on role significantly contributed to the success of Lake County at the Lake County State Fair. Whereas Melissa Fulton advocates for the County Certified Tourism Ambassadors Program, CTA program. Ultimately, her tendency and operational oversight led to the County CTA chapter being the only chapter in the nation network that is run by an all-volunteer network group. So that is the work of you and everybody, all the volunteers here in Lake County, following your lead, because I don't think anybody has ever told you no. And I think that's why you stand here, because I don't think I've ever told you no either, and I've done some crazy stuff. Whereas Melissa Fulton's dedication is an example to her employees, business owners, and volunteers. We applaud her many contributions, expertise, compassion, and generosity. Now therefore, be proclaimed, the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake does hereby express its sincere appreciation and gratitude to Melissa Fulton for her years of dedication, services, and wish her the best in your retirement, passed and adopted, this 13th day of July 2021.
I'm not sure I can. It's, it's been my pleasure, it's been my passion, it was never a job. And I know that even at times in these chambers, when we were on different sides, the supervisors and the chamber, we always came away friends, never enemies, we respected each other, and I have always known that everyone who differs in their opinion with ours or mine as an individual, their passion to make this county the best it can be is the same as mine. So if someone had told me all those years ago that I would have all the opportunity to contribute, I would have told them they were crazy. But I am blessed in everything that I've been able to do, and... But um, I am blessed in everything that I've been able to do and your appreciation means so much. And uh, so thank you to everyone who is here and on Zoom. Because um, again, I love everything I've been allowed to do and I appreciate all the board members that I've had over these years. And they didn't always agree with me and I didn't always agree with them, but we're still friends. And um, I don't know what else to say. I truly appreciate the recognition, but as always, it's the team. It's always the team. And I am blessed to have a great team in the office today and I know that they will get a good leader going forward and the chamber, the Lake County Chamber of Commerce will continue to be an asset to this county. So thank you so much.
With a mic up, anybody in the, in the audience here that'd like to say something?
Melissa, I, I want to echo your comments. You and I both have the gift of speaking our minds, sometimes for wonderful reasons and sometimes we regret it a little bit. But yet, while we both spoke freely through my years of serving my community and your years of serving your community, uh, we still remain friends and I appreciate that. And I look forward to hearing of your new endeavors a- as you move forward and I hope that we continue to stay in touch. So thank you. Supervisor Pyska.
One of the great things about being in a small county is one person can make a big impact and you really have, Melissa, you set a gold standard for service and I really want to thank you for um the time that you've, we've gotten to know each other over the last few years and for all of your years of service. And I, I really wish you um a wonderful, joyful retirement in your travels.
Thank you.
Supervisor Grant.
Melissa, I want to give you, I want, I want to give you your blessings. Thank you for all the work you've done. I want to attest to disagreements and still coming away friends because I remember during a blue collar committee, you really let me have it and for good reason. However, afterwards you, you came, you came out saying, you know, I'm not mad at you. I'm mad at the situation. We, we just need, need to continue on and do right and figure out how to do this together. We can disagree and I always appreciated that about you. And uh, I look forward to seeing what you'll be doing in your, in your free time now.
Melissa, I just want to say thank you too. Everything that you do is always promoting Lake County. Every time we had a conversation, it didn't matter. And through the pandemic, yes, there were challenges, but we were all learning and working in the same direction. I just want to say thank you for everything that you've done and you gave me a memory that I'll never forget. I had to kiss one of our local bass. And I'd never done anything like Melissa. Yep, she asked, I said yes. So it'll be a memory that I have forever. So um, all the unique work you've done, just can't say how much I appreciate it. And I know uh, even if folks don't know who are, who you are at this point as you're retiring, you, you have just left a legacy for Lake County and uh, big shoes to fill. So, and you're always welcome uh, at our operation down at Twin Pine. If you're ever coming, if you're traveling, you're stopping through, just check in and I'll make sure that you get the treatment that you deserve as a Lake County long-term legend. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, we already asked if there was anybody in the boardroom that wished to make a comment. Uh, we do have a hand up here in the Zoom room, so let's go ahead and get started there. Todd Metcalfe.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Um, Melissa, you probably don't remember me. And you're probably wondering why, why I'm even here as the Director of Behavioral Services. But a million years ago, I, I helped open and oversaw operations of the Lake County Visitor Center in Lucerne. And I can remember you were just so helpful, encouraging and supportive because I didn't know what the heck I was doing. And I'll, I'll never forget that, that you were just there to answer questions and, and help me along. And I just want to thank you for all you have done for our community and thank you for the support that you gave me then when I didn't know what I was doing. So I wish you all the best in the next chapter of your, your life. Um, and thank you again for everything, Melissa.
All right, let's go ahead and go to the chamber. I think I saw a hand and I mistook it for just a cell phone. If you wish to come to the podium, please come on up.
All right, first of all, I need to try to hold together. I'm Chuck Sabrina. And I'm going to have a hard time with this. And Melissa and I are going to be trialing together. I had a distinct opportunity of helping her when she sold her Hill House, cleaning out the barn and cleaning out the garage. And when you say she has a passion, well, she says she has a passion for what she does anywhere she's ever been. And I've seen it all, all the plaques, all the proclamations, everything since her young days until now. You cannot believe how, what a difference she's made in each community that she has lived. And she always had that drive, always had that passion. She took something on and the, uh, places were better for her being there. It's such an honor for, to know that she loves me and it's great that I love her. And I swear, I will always take care of her for the community and for ourselves. And we're going to have a wonderful time. And I just wanted to say that, that I love you and uh, things are going to be real well, but her passion has been all life, her whole life. It's amazing to see the things that I've seen, her and John, and they had such a great life together. And for me to be able to carry on that wonderful life, I'm just truly blessed. So that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Any other comments? All right. Melissa, thank you for everything. So we're going to move on to item 6.4, our 9:30 AM item, Public Hearing, City concurrently as Clear Lake Keys, CSA number 1, 2, 6, 13, 20 and 21, Board of Supervisors, Kelseyville County Water Works District 3 and Lake County Sanitation District Board of Directors. Consideration of A, Resolution Confirming Collections Of Annual Lighting Fees. B, Resolution Confirming Collections Of Delinquent Water Fees. C, Resolution Confirming Collections Of Delinquent Water And Sewer Fees. And D, Resolution Of Delinquent Sewer Fees For Lake County Sanitation District. Let's start with part A and welcome.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. This is a relatively standard uh process that we do every year. Part A is attaching the fees for our lighting districts to the tax roll. So that's how the lighting bills get paid, gets put on the property taxes for those parcels within the lighting districts. Um, so any questions on item A?
Nope. Looks uh, like the usual thing that we do, uh, putting it on the property tax roll and any questions from the public, since we have none up here at the board? And I would say, let's bring you back and take action on A. Offer the resolution? All right, Supervisor Scott has offered the resolution. Roll call, please.
Okay, uh, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Randall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right.
All right. Item number B um is a resolution uh for rolling delinquent and I believe B is for the water districts. Yes, um, so the CSAs. Uh, so the Board of Supervisors sits as the Board of Directors for the various water districts or county service areas that we represent. And uh, item B is the resolution, we do this typically annually, um, to roll delinquent water bills. So if someone is more than 60 days delinquent, um, and they haven't contacted us, we do a lot of outreach with customers, uh, multiple mailings, um, notification of this public hearing to try to work with them to get their water bill current or get a payment plan installed. But um, if that is not successful and they're still uh, delinquent at the time that we are looking to roll the tax roll, um, for property owners, we attach that water bill to their tax roll.
Any questions on part B? So what is the increase? Uh, and I'm just going to apologize to the board. I'm kind of speaking uh generally about B, C and D at this moment in time, since they're all delinquent um bills that we're going to be discussing. What, what kind of increase have we seen in this past year? Uh, I don't want to say due to COVID, but during a year of uh tumultuous financial struggles.
So for last year, for 2020 fiscal year, um, and we typically do this at the end of the fiscal year. So last year, um, our first aging report, uh, which is uh what we rolled to determine delinquencies, um, usually when we run that first aging report and send out notifications, uh, there is uh some compliance, usually about 20% compliance. And so then the amount that actually gets rolled onto the tax roll is usually lower. But uh, for the 2020 fiscal year, our first aging for all water districts and sewer districts uh was uh $918,000. And for 2021, our first aging report is 1.28 million. So we've seen about a $300,000 increase or about a 30% increase in potential delinquencies.
Okay. And, and the reason I ask that question is I know there's been a lot of programs out there to help people pay their utility bills. There's programs out there for people to help pay their rent that might be overdue. Uh, there's still some protections for that. I'm not looking to uh ask the board to follow that same direction because i- in my opinion, it's, it's a struggle because what's the purpose of paying your bills if someone else is going to pay it for you? I think that people need to be responsible uh for the bills that they have. But a collections puts people kind of on their heels and has other potential ramifications uh for them as well. Uh, I would like to see if we can defer the collections of delinquencies and look to see if maybe um Director Harder can speak with uh administration uh to figure out how to keep special districts whole. Uh, I know that we have some American Rescue Plan funds that's available, uh, just because adding more on top of the burden of what people may have struggled with financially during COVID-19, which while those rules and regulations didn't come directly from us, we did participate in saying, yes, we're going to follow state law. We did not buck the trend. We did not say ignore it. There were ramifications financially to the people that we represent. And so sending those people to collections because of unpaid bills and seeing an increase, which is most likely due to the ramifications of COVID-19 restrictions, uh, I'm, I'd like for us to take a look at deferring these, um, sending these to collections or putting it on the tax roll and looking to keep special districts whole in other ways while still giving them basically another year to pay off or another, extending that time period for them to pay off their delinquent bills. I just think that that's some, that, that makes me feel better to go about it that way. Um, and it seems fair to go about it that way. And I'm wondering if, what the board has to say on that or if you just want to move forward in the direction that we're, that is proposed to us.
I agree with you on that Supervisor Sabatier, I really do.
You know, I, I, I agree to the point that um, you know, many are suffering because of COVID and um, that you, we need to be looking at directions to help people. But I think, I mean, how many times did you reach out to these customers looking to, to help them with payment plans or other services? And I, I think if we didn't do that part in the beginning, um, then I'd be willing to, you know, go about this in a different direction. But I, I believe you guys made contact, you know, as much as you could, trying to help them. At some point, people need to help themselves. You know, I struggle with that. That if somebody's reaching out to you to try to help you make a payment plan, but you're not willing to answer the phone or return the phone call, um, I, I struggle with that piece.
And I think it's difficult to respond if you have no choice on how to approach even a payment plan. Uh, I mean, even for instance, uh, people who own bars were completely locked down until about June 15th. How are they supposed to pick up the phone and make a payment plan when they don't know what the restrictions will look like a month from now? And I, 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 I'm, I'm not looking to forgive. I'm looking to just extend uh and still hold people accountable and responsible for the bills that they do owe. Uh, but at this moment in time, I feel because we took part in the restrictions, that we should also take part in offering some kind of respite rather than just automatically following the same rules and regulations that we've been following for the past decades and, and years.
I would, I would appreciate, um, you know, uh, Scott, I hate to put it right back on you, but uh, you know, what are your thoughts uh on something like this? We haven't done this before and I understand COVID, that's why we're having the conversation. Uh, we do want to help where we can. But I guess the effect on your department uh and also the follow-up on your department because it would be more work. If we defer and we look at other uh avenues, it's going to be more work or something different than we've done in the past. So um, just I'd like to hear your response and then obviously I'll give you my response.
Certainly, thank you. You know, I have concerns, uh, you know, about revenue from an operating standpoint, but if, as Chair Sabatier indicated, we work with uh administration and we're able to uh find a way which makes the department whole and keeps us able to function, um, I'm agreeable to deferring this. I think a, a year is possibly too long and, and we can do the tax roll at any point in time. We typically do it at the end of the fiscal year, but if we wanted to give this six months, um, you know, we could do it again in six months. As Supervisor Scott pointed out, we do, you know, extensive outreach. Um, usually by the time we get to the point to, you know, people are being placed on the tax roll for delinquency, uh, those are people who typically aren't interested in working with us, unfortunately. You know, the good note about this going to tax roll, it's not a credit and collection, so it's not going to negatively impact their credit. Um, it does only affect property owners. Uh, for renters on the water side, if we have significant delinquencies there, uh, we do typically use a collection agency for that because we can't attach it to the property. If they're a renter, the, the property owner is not responsible. But um, I would be agreeable certainly to uh looking at working with our customers more. I'm not sure that we're going to get significant um, you know, compliance in that additional six months or even additional 12 months. Uh, I think by the time we've made it to this point, uh, the people who are going to work with us have already reached out and are going to work with us and those who aren't uh are going to get another six or 12 months respite and then it'll roll at a larger amount at that point in time. But those are my thoughts and concerns about it.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And Supervisor Sabatier, I do, uh, I do understand exactly where you're coming from. I do like the opportunity to uh potentially defer this to have some further discussions. But ultimately, I think Supervisor Scott is right, you know, um, what is our current policy right now for sewer and water hookups? Don't matter, we're not disconnecting anybody at this point, are we? Or?
Correct, no. Uh, Executive Order 42 dash 20 enacted by Governor Newsom last March was put into place and prevents us from disconnecting water connections for non-payment. Um, if there's health and safety reasons, if they have a, a back hook preventer which fails or something like that, we can still disconnect. Uh, but for non-payment, we are under a moratorium. Uh, that is not lifted until September 30th of this year. And then at that point in time, uh, we will be able to pursue disconnection as a way of bringing compliance with latent delinquent bills. Uh, sewer, we typically do not disconnect. So sewer, if they are delinquent, it typically just rolls. And we actually have some customers who regularly do not pay their bill. They just let it roll to the tax roll every year and they pay at one time um in that fashion.
Great. I appreciate that. And, and maybe that's where we could start with the deferment of uh, you know, tying it to uh the moratorium that is put in place by the state. That should give us time to at least have conversations, both with the ERP committee and, you know, Carol. So I, I would be in favor of, of deferring at this point also.
And I appreciate you mentioning. And I appreciate you mentioning six months because I agree, a year, a year is a long time where we're back to what we would be doing on a regular basis right now. And so to extend it all the way for another calendar year or fiscal year, that seems too long as well. So I agree that we, let's hope we can bring the conversation back on how we can keep you whole and how we can move forward, or if we need to move forward with what's presented to us today. But that's what I would like to see. And it looks like there's three of us right now, but I'd like to hear from Supervisor Piska.
I'm willing to talk about a deferment. I do agree with Supervisor Scott and Simon about, you know, eventually these bills do have to be paid. We can look at extending the disconnection if we have to, but let's, let's see what the impact is.
And, and not to belabor a point, but we're saying they're not working with us. We weren't necessarily working with the businesses that had restrictions. It was a very hard line of what could and could not happen. Yes, there was some opportunities for grants. Yes, there were some opportunities, but if they had bills stacking up, we didn't allow them to open up more to be able to afford the utilities and everything else as well. So I think that we're still feeling unfortunately a bit of the sting of the COVID-19 restrictions. So I would love to hear more about what's possible for the deferment and what we can do to keep you whole as well. And so I guess the consensus for B, C, and D is to have a conversation between special districts and administration and to come back to the board with what are the options?
Are these commercial properties or residential properties?
Both. And to give some additional context, on the sewer side, water side's pretty easy. Water, you have a base charge and then usage. On the sewer side, it's more complicated. It's based on use of the facility. So for some of our commercial customers, restaurants were, you know, an example of those that were impacted. Typically, there's a base charge for the restaurant and then there's typically a per-seat charge. So we issued credits. We reduced the bill by the per-seat charge, recognizing that they're closed. So, you know, we reduced bills and worked with commercial customers in those fashions. Schools was another example. It's usually a per-student charge on top of the base charge. So our bills went down in, you know, in response to COVID and in response to their reduced ability to serve, but still we are seeing some delinquencies.
And the reason I bring up commercials because that's where people would be employed and it impacts the employment opportunities, which impacts the, the income of our constituents. So the consensus I asked for, oh, sorry Supervisor.
Just have a question. I'm almost thinking that because there was no consequences of not paying your water bill, we didn't turn off our water. If that's maybe why we didn't see an increased amount of people wanting to pay their bills? What is the percentage that you saw in the past of turning their water off and then having them come in and pay their bill?
Usually pretty good. Shutting people's water off usually gets their attention.
So I'm almost thinking that because there was no consequences of not paying their bill.
Yeah.
Then there wasn't really motivation to go forward and try to find ways to pay that. I'm struggling with this a little.
Yeah. And we've seen, for example, in Spring Valley, CSA two, last year we saw 2,800 roughly in delinquencies. This year, we're seeing 43,000 in delinquencies. So there's, there's an understanding that they're not paying their bill because we can't shut them off. And out in Spring Valley, honestly, we see a lot of abuse. We're always chasing cannabis as an illegal use. And so we've seen situations where we suspect that's going on and the bills aren't being paid because they're aware they can't be shut off for non-payment.
Yeah, that's another conversation.
Yeah.
I would, although.
Yeah. No, I just wanted to add more than just, I agree. I apologize for that. You know, this gives enough time for people that are waiting for their EDD, you know, payments, things like that. I know there's a big backup in situations like that. People had to actually prioritize, and not speaking significantly about Spring Valley because I understand that problem. But in other areas, you know, having to prioritize which bills they pay, most of the time they're only going to go for the bills that are most important for their family as just to survive. So I understand that. And so I think six months is plenty of time. And after that, I think we can go forward from there, so.
We have never done this, so I would like to hear from county council. You know, this is something we haven't talked about. We haven't been through a pandemic either. So I would just like to hear, you know, where we stand as a board in doing something like this since it hasn't been done, that I know of, at least since I've been on the board.
Thank you. What you're doing today here with these resolutions is you're agreeing that these, these fees and delinquencies exist. And then you're also directing that the amounts of those delinquencies be placed on the 2021, 2022 tax rolls. But you're also hearing that water is different from sewer, that you don't yet know whether and how there'll be some kind of financial backfill for special districts to continue to serve their, their rate payers. So it's a little unclear what you intend with your consensus to do today. You're approving these resolutions, which are going to effectuate the placement of these delinquencies on the tax rule for each and every one of these. If you're going to defer collection, I'm not sure what you mean unless you're going to adjust these resolutions to take them off the tax rule, which might be a little bit premature, given the lack of information you have as to backfill and the differences in situation and the level of effort that's been expended by special districts with regard to sewer and/or water. Also, you don't, at this point, no cost to defer. So when you're saying six months, I think your board's going to have to determine exactly what you're deferring and specifically ask special districts from an operational on the ground, what is that going to mean? The resolutions say this is going to be placed on the tax rule. If you're going to defer placement on the tax rule, then what exactly would that period of time be? Would they come back with all of these resolutions and just continue the public hearings for six months? Or would you take a partial action now and then catch up later? Again, there's a number of unknowns here. And when you're deferring payment of something, it's always a good idea to know the circumstances that justify the deferral, which may be different in each of these cases from what special district's administrator is saying. And then the amount of that and whether and how you can effectuate that backfill.
So I just want to make some clarifications on, on what I proposed. It wouldn't be a deferment of payments. It would be a deferment of placing these into a collection agency or on the tax rule, which we can do annually, we can do every six months, because as you said, 60 days, no payment, you're delinquent. Every 60 days, you could come to the board and we can place the delinquent properties onto a tax rule if that was our policy of doing it that way. But we wait till the end of the fiscal year to do these things. This would just defer the decision of placing these into a collection or into the tax rule for six months due to the fact that there are still some residual impacts from COVID-19 and economic impacts to the people who in the past may have been able to afford this, but currently have not been back to full capacity to be able to do so. So it wouldn't be a deferment of payment for the water bills. The water bills would still continue to be submitted out and obviously increase the balance of what is due for those specific properties. I just know that one of the issues that we're struggling to tackle here is tax defaulted properties. And if you can't afford your water bill, I'm concerned that if we take action too quickly, that that might also eventually increase our number of tax defaulted properties, which then becomes a larger issue than just having a delinquent water bill. Not looking to take away the responsibility of having a water bill or sewer bill, just looking to defer our action of going further in a more hard-line approach on collecting those fees.
And I think, Mr. Chair, my, my question goes to each and every resolution authorizes placing them on the 2021, 2022 tax rule. You may want to inquire, what's the deadline for that? In other words, how does your deferment coordinate with the, the deadline by which special districts would have to place them on the tax rule? Because that's the only collection method that's specified in the resolutions.
Correct. And that is an August 6 deadline. We work with the auditor and the tax collector's office on that. So I'm not certain, you know, a deferment would obviously have an impact. We would then have to work with those departments. And I'm not certain what that coordination would require six months down the road.
And if it's August 6, I would hope that that's enough time to be able to have those discussions to say it's possible to wait till December, it's possible to wait and that it could occur. Or if it can't, at least we can come back before August 6 and make a, bring back this exact same public hearing and rediscuss the actions taken.
Tax rule takes a little bit of time to complete, so it'd have to be soon.
That tax bill goes out and is received the beginning of December.
Right.
So that is six months from now.
But I.
But the collection part of that could be deferred until that tax bill rolls out, which is six, five months from now. Otherwise, we have to wait another full year to have it on the tax rule, bills that go out.
We could, we could do this process, at least from our department's perspective, to have those items, those delinquencies placed on the tax rule. The tax rule is just going to go out in December and April regardless. But once they're placed on that tax rule, then we see those revenues. That's when we recognize those revenues. So even if we place it on the tax rule now, we don't start to see those revenues until those two tax payments come in.
Right. So that is a significant amount of time from now.
And, and I'm still willing to take that time. And I don't think that you have a deadline and that's it, we can't do this. It's the deadline to get it on the tax rule for the next tax bill that's going to be coming out is August 6. Once we pass that, it's not like we can never put these delinquent.
Correct. It just shows up on the next bill.
It just will have to take more time in order to get, get us there. And like I said, I'm, I'm willing to look at that and hopefully before August 6, you can have the conversations with administration and I'm guessing as well as our auditor controller to make sure that that's going to be possible. What, what does that look like? And so hopefully that gives you enough time to be able to have those conversations. And I still would like to move forward with the.
Well, I, I mean, we could have a conversation in the next couple of weeks and make that decision. It's problematic to allow people to get that far behind though, you know? That's one of my concerns.
I have a question on that. So let's say that we go ahead and do not accept these resolutions today and the moratorium is lifted in September, but they're still showing on your records that they're delinquent. Would their water still be turned off in September if we don't come up with another way to make the payments? This is what we're trying to avoid is their water being turned off.
Yeah. If they don't reach out to us and coordinate some sort of payment plan and we'll, you know, we reach out to them. Before we do shut offs, there's, there's multiple forms of communication with our customers to encourage them to work with us to set up a payment plan. A shut off is, is really our last resort.
So regardless of what we do here today, that still could occur in the end of September.
That still could occur at the end of September.
So maybe we need to go ahead and accept these resolutions and in that time, trying to figure out how we can find the money to help these customers to pay these bills so their water does not get shut off in September. Because that's the ultimate result that we're trying to avoid and it's going to happen regardless if we accept these resolutions or not.
We're going to find the money to pay their bills?
Well, Bruno was talking about finding.
There's programs out there.
There's programs.
And we've, we've, we've shared some of that information on social media. There's, it's not available to us, but as a, as a private person, it's available to them. We've encouraged them, if they're struggling paying their utility bills or their rent, reach out to these programs, so.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah. You know, I know, good intention. I, I think, you know, with the information from here from Scott and with Anita to, we want to find a way to help. I know that's exactly what your, your intentions are. But maybe not deferring these, these resolutions or the actions on it today are the way to go. Maybe changing my stance on that, that we move forward with approving the resolutions, but then look at an opportunity with some of potentially the ARP funds, just as we did with the CARES Act funds, where we reached out and came up with the program that we did for the businesses, the $20,000, you know, grants that we put together to help pay with those. Maybe there's an opportunity that we, that the committee at least consider some of those opportunities to help, as Tina said, Supervisor Scott said, because really the intention is to help people with these bills and not be shut off. So good intentions, I think, but I, I'm going to change my, my stance on it and think that we should move forward with it and then look at working with the ARP committee and coming up with maybe some other solutions, including the current grants that are out there or opportunities to help folks move forward with this. So I'm officially changing my stance, Bruno. Sorry, man.
No, no worries.
So go forward.
And on that note, kind of on, off subject, I think we need to be looking at other utilities too, that we need to be looking at to help people because it's not just water and sewer, it's going to be PG&E, it's going to be other utilities that are going to be shut off when that moratorium is lifted.
Yeah. And for point of note, CPUC extended PG&E's moratorium until the end of September as well. It was in the middle of June, but they pushed that out to the end of September as well. One other item, as always, when this comes up annually, we continue to work with customers. So even if these resolutions are adopted until the actual moment where we send that final information over to the auditor and tax collector, we continue to work with customers, set up payment plans, allow them to pay off balances, whatever we can do to avoid that last ditch effort.
Okay. Any further comments? Let's go ahead and open this up to the public. We have, did, did you want to give more information on C and D? I know I kind of interrupted on B.
No, I think C and D are similar in nature to B. C, if I'm not mistaken, is the Kelseyville Waterworks Districts three. It's its own legal entity. So you, as this board of directors, are sitting as four legal bodies today. So C is for Kelseyville Waterworks District number three. And then D is for Lake County Sanitation District, which is all the areas that we serve for sewer only. So, but I think we probably have to consider the resolutions and do the public hearing one at a time for each of those four.
I just wanted to, I kind of hijacked the conversation and put them all in one lump sum, but I know you only presented B. If there's no further comments from the board, let's go ahead and open it up to the public. Anyone have a comment or question on item 6.4? And in the Zoom room. Oh, I didn't see you. I'm so sorry, sir. If you could please step up to the podium. And in the Zoom room, please raise your hand and you will be called on once we go ahead and finish in the boardroom.
My name is Darnell Walton, I live in Surin. Life is complicated for all of us and we're trying to do the best we can for all of us. And today, this problem has been magnified by about 10,000-fold from my letter. I received from, I guess this would be D, on my sewer stating that I was in arrears. I called the office. The office told me my payment was two days late. I said, how can that be? I have auto pay. Well, I was told this letter is sent out to everybody every year. This is the first one I've gotten. I'm trying to understand and work with the system that we have and to hopefully improve it. This is an upsetting situation for me personally. I pay my bills. I have an auto pay. I double-checked with the third-party auto pay. I have authorized them to pay whatever the district bills them. This was a mistake when the program was first started in which I had to authorize the third party each year due to the increase, automatic increase each year, as I understood. That's been resolved. Now to spend the time and effort, which none of us have the luxury of, this is a waste. There is a glitch that fell through. I have friends who receive these letters, who pay their bills, who can pay them and do pay them. So my question today is, how do I help you help me? How do I help you help all of us here? By looking at the obviouses, the simples. You brought up just incredible complicated things that go back to and ultimately to def, you know, properties that have defaulted, which is one of the biggest problems this county faces economically as well as socially. It's hard to support organized. It's hard to support organized, voted into, elected systems that have put our faith and trust in, as well as our money, when it appears all too often that the common sense, which is never common and seldom sensible, is overlooked. So whether I have an answer today, or will I get this bill, this kind of a statement again with an auto pay? It's, it's, it's odd that I think I can pay other bills in this county, I could be wrong and please correct me, with a credit card, but I have never historically been able to do that with the sewer district. I could pay cash, I could walk in, I could pay in advance, I could pay monthly. So finally, we got a system here that I have to pay each transaction above and beyond my bill. I'm willing to do that for the convenience of not having to be in town to pay my bills, so I'm not in arrears. I'm doing my due diligence, I'm trying to work with the system. Please help us all understand how it works, and I will close with one final thing. I've had a presence here since 1950, one way or another. I hear it today, I hear it every day, of all those past days, about Lake County giving it over and over and over to people who have proven themselves not to be responsible, more and more leeway, to the detriment of the overall county, its welfare, and those participants in this county who are willing, not just able, but willing-
Three minutes.
-to play along. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'm sure that if you reach out to special district or your district supervisor, that they can review that letter and, and see if there's anything that can be done about it. I don't know the specifics, I don't think any of us have any of the specifics to be able to discuss it intelligently right now, but I would say please reach out, and I'm sure that they, they are willing to sit down with you and see, either make you understand why you received the letter, or correct any errors, if there was any errors.
I'm sorry, I've done that twice, and now I have a zero all of a sudden, I've cleared up. That's not an answer, that's not working with me. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Any further-
I could respond briefly. You asked how you could help, help us, and, and your feedback, along with others, has done that. The timing of the letter, the, the timing of when the letter went out and when things were delinquent caused some chaos this year, this cycle. We've adjusted things, our bills are due upon receipt, however, the language isn't clear in that. So to get to 60 days delinquent, there was some overlap due to the billing cutoffs and the deadlines for tax roll stuff. So that caused customers who are nor, not normally delinquent to appear to be delinquent to the system, and so they received letters. We've taken steps to modify that process so that doesn't happen again in the future, so.
Thank you for that. Any further questions from the boardroom? And again, I said it, the Zoom room, please raise your hand if you have a comment, and I see none, so let's bring it back to the board and see what actions we take.
We're on B, I'll offer the resolution.
Resolution's been offered by Supervisor Scott. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatia?
Nay.
Thank you.
And moving on to item C?
I'll offer the resolution.
Resolution's been offered by Supervisor Scott. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Nay.
Super, sorry, I'm trying to take notes. Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatia?
Nay. And then item D?
I will offer the resolution.
And resolution's been offered by Supervisor Scott. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Nay.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatia?
Nay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and that concludes that item.
Thank you.
Thank you both. So it is 10:55 a.m., we are almost on time, just an hour and 15 minutes late for our next item, but we will take a 10-minute break, and we will come back together at 11:05, so quick recess. All right, everyone, welcome back. Let's go ahead and start our 6.5 item from 9:40 a.m. A, Presentation on County Facilities Energy Conservation Measures Program, and B, Consideration of Agreement for a Preliminary Energy Audit. Director Ewing.
Good morning, Lars Ewing, Public Services Director. As a, as the slides are being put up here, I'll just give you a brief intro. First off, I'm joined with, by Michael Day with Train. He will be taking the bulk of the presentation, but what I'll, what I'll do is just kinda set some of the background. The board, I think most of the board is aware that last year, through the Public Services Department, we put out a request for qualifications for an energy services company. The, the scope of what we were reaching out for is a company that, that could not only guide the county through assessing county facilities with, with energy conservation measures, but ultimately, the approach is to actually produce those energy savings. It's kind of a design-build approach. Through that RFQ, we received five respondents. Train was, was selected as the, the most qualified firm that, that responded through a, a selection panel, and so we're, what we're doing now is, is presenting essentially, it's, it's kinda like a scope of work. Train has, has done some investigation on, on what the county facilities have, what they don't have, and it really does extend beyond just, let's change out the lights to LED, or, or let's, you know, get some, some better HVAC. That's what we've continually used as low-hanging fruit, and, and some entities have done that and, and others haven't, and I'll, I'll let Michael go into that a little bit later. But it extends beyond, beyond that a little bit. In fact, what you'll see on the slide there is, is the selection committee did rank Train as best qualified, and, and a lot of the driving factors for that is, is that second bullet there, advanced energy options, that there was a recognition by Train in, in their response to the RFQ, that, that, that fourth bullet, county facility staff efforts to date, likely took out a lot of the, the low-hanging fruit. And, and again, Michael will comment to that, but, but it does extend beyond just the lights and the HVAC, essentially, and solar, you know, I need to not just jump past that. We need to look for ways that, that, that we might be able to reduce our reliance, kinda different, different power generation options, so that's, that's a lot of what will be considered. What Train has, has done up to this point is, they're, they're about to start, if, if the board is supportive, on a preliminary audit, what is called a preliminary energy audit. That, that, after that would, would come an investment-grade audit, and then ultimately the project development. When we say project development, that is, on a, on a big picture, what is the energy savings project? So it would, it would include all the different buildings that, that we, we might be pursuing different projects at, but all one, all-encompassing project. So if we could go to the next slide, it's really the transition over to, to Train, and he'll, he'll present to you in, in a succinct fashion as we can get to, because I know we're on a, on a, on a timeframe, and, and I know Michael Day, so. So, so I'll turn it over to Michael.
Thanks, Lars. Let's see here, am I on?
You should be on.
All right. Hi, I am Michael Day, I'm with Train, on the phone, calling in. We have Reggie Ingram as well, and Greg Lisk from our team. So the things that we wanted to do were some basic introductions as to who we are. We wanted to go over the guiding principles for this project as we saw it. We wanted to give you sort of an, an interim assessment on the traditional energy projects, and there's a breakpoint there, and talk about what we'd wanna start looking at for advanced energy projects. And to be honest, we have not started on that yet, and we can't really start until you officially select us, and then talk about the, the path forward and what we see. Okay, next slide. So the guiding principles, as we understand it and working with staff, is that we want this project to be self-funding, so this would be no capital coming from the county for whatever kinds of upgrades or projects that we're looking for. We wanna try and keep as much of the work local as possible. If there's something going on, let's use local contractors, let's use local labor to do it that has economic impacts beyond just what the project does. Obviously, science and reality-based, and we're trying to, where possible, accomplish multiple goals at once. Supervisor Simon, you know, we've been working for a while with Hidden Valley Lake to try and do a combination fire flow, energy storage, microgrid, keep the lights on, and PSS-type of a, a project there. Where it's possible to do multiple things at once, that's a, that's a good goal to have. What we did was, we started up until now, looking at numerous county sites, and this is where we were able to use publicly available information up until now. So again, this is sort of the breakpoint between the publicly available information and where we start doing something that's a little bit more detailed in our preliminary review. We looked at a whole bunch of county-owned occupied buildings, water, wastewater, lighting districts, landfill, and in looking at that, that gave us sort of a, an idea baseline of where things were on the, what you might call the traditional measures. Okay?
And I, I think it's a good opportunity to just jump in. You mentioned water and wastewater, it was not just Public Services working on this with, with, with Train. Administrative Office was involved, special districts, obviously, with, with their facilities because they are a heavy hitter, and, and then other entities that, that manage their own facilities, but, but they were typically buildings and, and grounds for that matter, but we'd be talking about Public Works Sheriff, so I just wanted to make sure that we, we made mention of that, that it was, that it was not just operating in a silo.
Okay, next slide. So traditional energy measures are the things that you'd normally think of for an energy services contract, lights, air conditioning, windows, roofing, those types of measures. Usually what we're able to do is to go in and, and look at something, and we find some low-hanging fruit, like going from fluorescent lights to LEDs, that have a very fast payback. So the money invested gives a lot of revenue flow, and that revenue flow pulls through some of the items that may have a higher capital cost that need to be paid. So typically, lighting pays for HVAC, and, and HVAC may partially pay for roofing. That's the normal way of things. So we looked at 74 buildings totaling 520,000 square feet, 3.1 million in annual energy spend. We developed a rank order with staff of 19 buildings, so we cut that down to 285,000 and 250, or 2.56 million in annual energy spend. And when we looked at it, what we saw was that your staff, and particularly Bob, from what I understand, has really been forward-thinking on this. They've been taking advantage through stuff that was self-performed, through money that was available, to get ahead of the curve. So replacing the lights without needing an external contractor to make it happen, getting the thermostat set right, just doing all those things to really lower it, and they're, like a lot of things in life, that's a double-edged sword for, you know, we look at a lot of counties, and you guys are at the top in terms of just not leaving a lot of thing, a lot of low-hanging fruit to deal with, and it really is a compliment to, to Bob and the rest of the Public Works staff, that there was, if we were just looking at traditional measures, we'd be coming back to say, "Sorry, there's no project here," just to put it completely bluntly, because you've been so good at attacking the items that use a lot of energy.
And I appreciate them saying that, and it's an opportunity to footstomp that with Public Services, with, with Bob, with his staff, and, and I knew that when I stepped in five or six years ago, that, that they were out in front. He's, he's using, he, he's being very innovative, I mean, he works behind the scenes, and, and he, he's, he's constantly looking at, at ways that we can, we can do, do our job better and, and save the county money. So, so Bob, just thank you to, to you and your guys.
Another part of that is renewable plus storage, which is photovoltaic, typically photovoltaic plus batteries, including some incentive programs that are out there called the Self-Generation Incentive Program, or SJEB. It's tough to make a lot of that stuff work, and if we could go to the next slide, please? So this is a map of the, obviously, of your area. These were the top areas that we were, that we were looking at. The large circles there, the size of the circle represents how much of an energy spend there is, and this was part of the visualizations that helped us hone in on the, again, for traditional measures, where there might be some opportunities. Next slide, please? This, I think, is a really illustrative type of, type of slide, and there's been a lot of talk about solar photovoltaic. Hey, it's great, it's free energy, you put the, you put it on there and the sun lowers your bill. What you see on the, on the figure up there on the left-hand side, where it looks sort of like a loaf, that's a, an annual projection of the output of a solar photovoltaic. So it would be every day of the year on one axis, and then as it goes from left to right, that's the amount of production you get out of it every day. So what you see just to the right of the, of the top of the loaf is a blue or purple box, I, I apologize, I'm colorblind, and that is where, what peak used to be in PG&E. So those were the most expensive hours out of the year, and you can see that a lot of the loaf is captured in that blue box. So when you were making electricity, a lot of it was being made when those hours are really the most valuable. But since earlier this year, it moved over to the right, to that goldish-green box. So peak now, instead of running from noon to 6, runs from 4 to 9, and as you look out there, you see that there isn't a whole lot of solar production when it's most valuable. As a matter of fact, for three hours, for three months out of the year, super off-peak, meaning a price of around 6 cents a kilowatt hour, is from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. in PG&E. So the lowest value time out of the year for your production is actually when you make the most solar photovoltaic. And so this is the great shift that's been happening, and it doesn't mean that solar photovoltaics have no place, it means that they largely need to be paired with some sort of storage from an economic standpoint to wheel that production from when it's made to when it's valuable, if the project's going to pay for itself. This is an important point, so are there any questions on, on this part, about how the time shift of peak to later in the day doesn't really line up with solar anymore? Okay, next slide. So the interim assessment on, on solar photovoltaic is that there's the technical capability to install substantial solar photovoltaic at county facilities, but that electricity use by the county is on a time-of-use basis. It's not flat, it's not the same time every, there are times of the day when electricity is valuable, and there are times when it's much less valuable than average. You don't pay an average bill, you pay it on a time-of-use basis, and that the problem is, is that, is that there is a misalignment between when solar makes the electricity and when the high billing periods are, and that you may take on projects for other reasons, such as resilience, or carbon goals, or something else like that, but without having energy storage, it's very challenging to make those projects be economically viable, even more so when you're dealing with building stock that's already had a tremendous amount of its low-hanging fruit, energy efficiency measures, take, basically taken off the table. Next slide, please? So again, the, the, just sort of the high-level view that we did from publicly available information is that the- is that the, a lot of the low-hanging fruit has been captured. There are some upgrades that will need to happen, no matter how well you maintain it, no matter how far in front of things you are. Equipment ages, and when it ages, it eventually needs to be replaced. And that's not to say that there aren't needs from public facilities, but it's going to be very difficult for a traditional measure to really just fund it by itself. However, we believe that there are some, what we call advanced energy opportunities, and that those may be able to provide revenue to make some of the traditional needs move forward when they wouldn't otherwise be able to pay for themselves. Next slide. So advanced energy projects. Next slide, please. So if you look at the larger-scale energy projects, similar to what we've been working on for the last year and change at Hidden Valley Lake, there are some market changes that have happened that affect these. So the biggest one is that the California I S O and PG&E interconnection process has basically exploded. CISO has already said that the, that the interconnection applications that came in in April of this year are going to be, aren't going to be processed for probably five years. And they've closed the window for new interconnection applications for 2022. It won't open again until 2023, and then you're looking at, again, five to six years of, of processing there. So it is a really tough situation. You also see with PG&E, they're having significant transmission issues at the Vacadixon substation. You're not that, you're not that close to Vacadixon, that's the big one. If you're driving down 80 between San Francisco and Sacramento, you pass this absolutely massive substation. It's so big, it actually has its own page on Wikipedia. Well, when that one has problems, it causes problems for everything in the area. And what that means is that without transmission, you can't get what are called capacity payments until you get that full deliverability out of CISO. And that means that projects need to change. They can't be reliant simply on merchant or grid revenue. They're going to, in many cases, be reliant on at least partially being funded by grants. The good news is, there are a lot of grants that are coming available to communities, to, to communities that are in high-fire-threat districts, to communities that have been hit with public safety power shut-offs, a lot of things, particularly for critical facilities. And we think that we can put something together there, and we want to get started with looking at that for you, focused on critical facilities and focus, you know, dealing with the, with the market as it is right now, and to put Lake County in a position to go after getting your fair share, and maybe more, of the grants that are available as they become, as those grant funding opportunities start opening up later this year. Next slide, please.
If we can get rid of that dialogue box in the front? Maybe just hit okay.
Is it this mouse?
No, I think it's this mouse down here.
Right there?
Oh.
Yeah, hit okay there.
Sorry about that.
Perfect.
Is it Michael's link?
Uh, next slide.
I think we can deal with it. Thank you, Michael.
Yeah. Sorry, didn't know that was me. Next slide.
I think that is.
Oh, that is Leslie. So the path forward here is that we're seeking the board, basically, to validate the selection of us by staff. We're honored and pleased to be selected. We want to start looking for projects for you and doing some preliminary analysis, and come back to this board with an offer. My guess would be six to eight weeks. And we'll be putting some pretty substantial engineering resources behind that, so we can come back with a, with an offer to go into a detailed design phase in order to catch some of those grant opportunities that we know are going to be coming out later this year. And we think that there are some great opportunities, but for us to get started on that, we need to be officially selected.
Yep. And that's, that's the opportunity where we, I think it's a good chance to talk about the A and the B, the A and the B of this item. A was the update, and B is a consideration of an agreement for, for Train to move ahead with a preliminary energy audit. It is a no-cost agreement to perform that preliminary energy audit. Once that is completed, the, the next phase would, would be an investment-grade audit, which, which may or may not come with, you know, depending on what the preliminary energy audit finds. It, it may be a make-or-break point, well, it will be a make-or-break point, so go-or-no-go is probably a better way to put it. So at this point, it's a, it's a no-cost agreement, and we would be coming back to the board with a presentation of those findings.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Any comments or questions? Sam? You have the light switch.
We can hear.
So I'm going to suggest that that's enough on our agenda. It's either in the chambers or Zoom. If we don't have Granicus working, we'll go ahead and get the video up there once everything is done. We are still recording, so we'll have all the video to be able to post at a later time, but nobody has missed anything. We are still on item 6.5. We took a pause during the technical difficulties, and let's go ahead and get back to it. Any questions or comments, or did you, let's go ahead and go back to Michael. You said you wanted to talk to us real quick about the process.
Sure. So the process is, is that we're getting started with this. This is, as was mentioned, no cost for us to do the preliminary analysis. We're going to look for advanced energy opportunities. We're also going to see what that would mean financially, and how that could start helping along some of the traditionals that couldn't work without it. If we find something, or if we don't find something, we're going to come back at the end of this preliminary review and give you a report. At that point, we would want to start moving into detailed design and an investment-grade audit for the different elements. At that point, there does start to be an obligation. So when we move into Phase Two, that's when we really start getting into the engineering costs and hard costs. For an advanced energy project, that could easily be in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. At the end of that, when we end, or correction, when we enter into Phase Two, we're going to tell you what we think that opportunity looks like, about what we think it'll cost, about what we think the, the economic benefit to the county is. And you have the choice to say, yes, we want to move into Phase Two or not. If we move into Phase Two, at the end of that, there are really three different options the way it can work out. Number one is, if Train has totally misjudged things during the preliminary, and we move into it, and we find out that we're just way off, there's no obligation for the county to move on. So if we think that a project is going to cost $20 million, and it turns out that it costs $60 million because there's a tiger salamander habitat, or something like that that needs to be mitigated, if there's a problem there where it doesn't work the way that we thought it would at the beginning of Phase Two, that's on us, we eat the cost. If it turns out that things are pretty much like we thought, and the project works, and then we move into the final phase, which is contracting, in that case, everything's great, the costs of our development get rolled into the final contract. The one time that there is a commitment is, if we move into that future Phase Two, and we set out what we think a successful project will look like, and during Phase Two, we get there, and then the council decides to, or the Board of Supervisors decides to not move forward with the project for whatever reason, then there is a termination fee associated with Phase Two work, where if we bring you what we say we're going to, and you back out, then you're going to charge us for the, for the, for the engineering that's there in Phase Two. So there's no cost here, but there is a potential for a cost in that second phase, if you choose to move forward with it, and then you effectively voluntarily back out of the project at that time.
And I appreciate, if I could, I appreciate him, him bringing that up. That, that is to come. I will make sure that that, that's clear. We're not to that point. We, we come back and, and we have that, that go/no-go decision at the completion of the preliminary audit.
Correct.
So thank you for that summary. And that process is tried and true throughout a lot of different counties and municipalities around California.
Right. Thank you very much for the clarification and the additional information. Any comments or questions? Supervisor Scott?
No question. Just want to thank Lars for bringing this forward. I know this is something that we have been talking about since I've been on the board over four years, not only looking at the economic benefits for the county, but making sure that we're doing the right thing for our environment. So I'm definitely in favor of moving forward, and exciting to see what comes out of this.
So, Supervisor Simon?
I'm in the same way. I'm glad that we're having the conversation today. You know, we have all spoken about this, but I know numerous times we look at it. And I hope when we're doing the audits, we're looking at, I know we said some of the term, I think, was the, the long-term innovation that's coming with this. So I know in the past, you talked about the potential opportunity of the water that we do move in the county through the pipes, you know, through the sewer, you know, is there an opportunity to generate, you know, electricity there? Looking at, you know, the, the solar opportunity with the battery backup storage, I think, is very encouraging, understand that, want to see some of those projects happen here. But also looking at the innovative opportunities that, like I said, we may not even know that are out there right now. I think, long-term-wise, here in the state of California, they're looking to go by 2035 or 2040 to a lot of electric vehicles, and looking at those opportunities for fueling stations that will look different than they do right now, opportunities to make money down the road for producing solar that could charge electric vehicles, and other things in our, in our, in our own vehicle fleets, and looking at all those opportunities as we move forward. I think it's very unique, but very happy to be having this conversation, both from the climate change opportunities, but really looking at how to innovate what we have here, our natural resources, which we were just talking. We are not enjoying the heat that is coming through right now, but there is plenty of sun, and the battery technology coming along with it, where we can store it, reuse it, and the artificial intelligence to know when to do that is really coming along. So I'm excited about the opportunities, because we're always looking away of creating economies, jobs, and this may be one of those opportunities that we really take advantage of. Being rural is sometimes a challenge for us, but I think this is really going to work in our favor if we do the right thing. So Lars, thank you very much for bringing this. And I know, Michael, we had met, I think, three years ago in Sacramento with C A O, you know, and Lars was already, you know, having those conversations, so happy to be here today.
Yeah. Just, just as a follow-up to that, that I think is important to note, I mentioned earlier, the public services, the, the facilities-centric focus on this, not, not that there was one, but that, that's how it initiated, was, was what can we do for our buildings? Obviously, it's, it expands beyond that. The use of energy expands far beyond that. That's, that was demonstrated during the slide, that the map and the bubbles, a lot of the, the bigger colored ones were, were not facilities, not, not, you know, your traditional facilities, buildings, they were, they were other infrastructure, water, wastewater infrastructure. And so it's, it's going to be important that, that a lot of other departments participate in, in this, or at least have, work in parallel paths into that, that, and they have, a lot of them, special districts particularly, has, has been out in front with a lot of, with a lot of different methods, particularly solar, that they have implemented, because their pumps and motors are on a, on a continual basis. They're not like a, a building that has, you know, a, a set time where it, where it has that need. But I think the point is that ensuring that we, that we do include, collaborate with those other departments that have, that are heavier hitters. So I will reach out to them, but we just want to ensure that, that we have the, you know, the, the board, support from the board to, to include them with this.
I just wanted to think, just to add on to that, Lars, absolutely, not only all the other county departments and everything that's using the energy, as you're saying, but also too, with our just communities, you know, we're always resilient, we talk about that after the fires, but engaging the community and starting this here at the county level is really important, because over the next decade, that's going to be how we survive and who we, you know, really get our name out there, that we're not only resilient through disasters, but we're resilient for the community and the climate, and from the business aspect, from different, different community members and business owners. So I think it's unique, you know, not only unique to Lake County, but I think we can be a leader in this industry. So I'm, I'm excited about the conversations we're going to have, because projects are like what we do. And I, I appreciate sitting on the board and all the paperwork we get, but it's great to have projects and to see those come to fruition. And we know that this is something that our community is interested in. We've all heard that, and, you know, I just, I'm excited to have the conversation.
So just a full disclosure, I've met with Michael Day multiple times. He was a presenter over at R C R C, I think Supervisor Crandall met him before I did. And right away, I needed to ask a lot of questions, and I've learned quite a lot from Mr. Day. I have every belief that Train is the innovative solution that we are looking for, that they will find ways to help not just us as a county, but our communities as well. And, and that's what I'm hoping that we can look at, not just our facilities, but also what can we do to provide assistance to our communities, because we are at the whim of PG&E. In the late 90s or mid 90s, we already had rolling blackouts, they seemed to disappear, and we almost forgot about them until they just came back, starting last year. We're back, and it's going to happen again, and again, and again, until we figure out how to be a lot more self-sustainable. And I think that we have the capability to have some of those self-sustainability, maybe not being fully self-sustainable, but to increase our sustainability. And I'm hopeful that we can, the, the project that you've discussed with me, that you just brought up over in Hidden Valley, to me, is the type of project that I would like to discuss further on, how can we duplicate that kind of project throughout the county, where it creates fire suppression potential as well as energy? And I know, I believe that you were talking about the transmission interchange, mainly, I'm guessing that's the issue of creating things like peakers, where we can't necessarily connect directly to the grid to sell right away. But I think the idea of peakers, and I apologize for my phone buzzing, the, the idea of peakers, which is basically energy that has been, that is being held, whether it's in a battery or some other format, a, a big water tank, that you can turn on when that energy can be passed on to the consumer, that, to me, is what helps us with P S P S. That, to me, is what helps us during rolling blackouts, especially when we're dealing with it in the 100-degree, 100-degree weather that we've been enduring so far this past week. So I'm, I'm very excited that you're on board, very excited to approve this today, because I really think that we are going to see some innovative stuff, and I think that we are going to be in a much better place than where we are right now. Supervisor Simon?
Just had one follow-up too, and we're looking at this, because we're talking about solar and backup and everything, but I know there are programs out there too. I hope when we're doing the analysis, we're looking at, the PG&E opportunities are out there too, you know, and multiple meetings that we've had, even through PG&E, it's, you know, they used to have a program, and they brought it back. Now, from my understanding, is the BIP program, the E L R P program, where if you have your microgrid set up, you can get the meters set up through PG&E, and they'll pay you per kilowatt when you drop off on the high-intensity hours and other things. So I think there's not only putting the program together, but other programs we need to be looking at to, to maximize some of the funding, you know, or financial benefits, where we could run our generators, our solar system, battery backups, and there's actually money being, coming in per kilowatt saved during those, those high hours. So I know, I'm just throwing out some terms there, but I think PG&E's rolling some of those out. I'm hoping any business owners or anything should be looking into those opportunities too, because there, there are things, and we have a lot of opportunity from the county to make sure we're looking at those. So during that audit and other stuff, I hope we're looking at all those, looking at opportunities and programs we should be enrolling in, so we could utilize some of this stuff and start to actually get paid for using the systems we're going to be setting up. And it's not where we're selling it back to them, it's just saying, we got the equipment to run during the high-peak hours, so they'll reimburse you for some of that, whether it's just on the bill or direct payments, we just, I, I hope we're looking at all those as we're doing that, you know, just to subsidize. You know, I looked at there, I think it was the, the one sewer treatment plant was 900 and, almost a million dollars for the North West plant. You know, we cut that in half. What a huge savings and opportunity to move to different budget items, so just wanted to mention that.
Just to follow up on that, Supervisor Simon, part of what you're doing in selecting us today is giving us standing to talk to groups like the Community Microgrid Enablement Program at PG&E. This is a really great program from PG&E. We're working with them really in-depth at Hidden Valley Lake and for Tooleme County and for other customers, and they're letting us get into some of the really inside data that we wouldn't normally have access to at PG&E, to get to, to understanding. to get to, to understanding if and when projects can work. They are really good, but before we can start talking to them, we need to be selected as it. And, and they work as a clearinghouse to help us understand everything that we can do to get access to in terms of grants, in terms of market participation, whether it's at CAISO or through PG&E or to another load serving entity like a CCA. That's what our, what, a big part of our analysis, part of it's, you know, the, the mechanical engineering of how everything would fit together. Part of it's the economic analysis, part of it's financial. Those are all different elements, but PG&E has, I can say that the Community Microgrid Enablement Program and that staff has been the best set of people from a utility that I've ever worked with in the last 25 years that I've been doing this since I got out of the Navy. And they are, they are really good and they're really helping us not just see what's out there, but see what's out there and test it, stress test it fast. So because again, the grants that are going to probably be pretty important to making some of these things work, the grants aren't going to wait for us, right? We got to catch that train. And that's where really the, the CMEP and PG&E helping us iterate through some things and figure it out quickly is what's going to be needed to put this county in position to get its fair share of those dollars.
And since we're at the agreement stage, a point of emphasis in the RFQ was, was leading the initiative for, for programs, SJEB or others. So that, that was a huge factor in the selection process. And, and I'm saying that even though he was in the Navy and I was Air Force, so.
Cooperation.
Any further, Supervisor Crandall?
Yeah, well, since you said that, the Army is going to join in. Well, you know, it's, it's just good to see this come to fruition. We met with you in 2019 and I know it's something that's been kind of discussed previous. My predecessor discussed it with me about the project in Hidden Valley, the SJEB project, where you met with us and explained the DUC bill. And now obviously that's changed in a way. And so just seeing that and finally coming to fruition at three years later, two years later. And Public Services, thank you for putting us in a position to, you know, be successful for this and move forward because like you said, their activity is what got us the opportunity to work with you. So good job.
All right, if there's no further comments, let's open it up for the public. Anyone in the boardroom have a comment on this item? Seeing none, if you're in the Zoom room, please press the icon at the bottom of your screen to raise your hand or dial star nine if you're calling via telephone. And seeing none, let's bring it back to the board and take action on B.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the consideration of agreement for a preliminary energy audit with Train.
Second.
You have a motion from Supervisor Crandall, a second by Supervisor Simon. Johanna, roll call please.
Okay Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
Amber Palatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Looking forward to your work.